I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, November 21st. The Monday before Thanksgiving. I'm very glad to have everyone here. Tonight, we have Pastor Kieric Butler of the Faith Christian Center at 3059 South Cobb Drive, who will come forward at this time and give our invocation. Also, Richardson plays the flag, so everyone please rise.
It will be a light to the rest of Georgia and the United States on how the city should operate, and that people will follow its example. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those folks that are new to our community, want to make a change, or just, I'm sure the folks at the Faith Christian Center, which is at South Cobb and Church, would love to have you. They've been there a number of years, so thank you very much, Kieric. Under two agenda changes, we do have a couple of changes. Six F, I think that's what it is, four F. Four F, which is 2016-40, is a public hearings zoning request, rezoning from G C to R T D conditional for the construction of 68 townhomes on Camp Highland Road. You may be here for that. That will be tabled until December 19th. So, once we get to that, that will be tabled till the 19th of December. We have item A, under agenda changes also, 2016-486, approval to suspend the rules to add an item to the formal business agenda, which will be six D. I will ask that Councilmember Corky Welch make that motion, and then we'll add the item to the agenda, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and add agenda item to formal business as item six D.
Second.
And motion is second to suspend the rules. Motion, please vote. And that's approved five zero. We have two members that are out tonight, Ms. Taryn Nolowich, New Orleans, and Ms. Susan Wilkinson is out of town with her husband. Family is recording, Ms., celebrating her anniversary, so good reason to be out. Items to be under agenda change, 2016-487, approved to add an item to the agenda for formal business, item six D. I'll ask Mr. Corky Welch to add that item to the agenda.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a motion to approve to add agenda item six D as formal business as item six D.
I'm gonna go ahead and read that. 2016-488, designate public parking along Belmont Boulevard is limited to three hours consecutive hours and authorized sites to be installed to this effect. Is that good?
Sounds good.
Second.
Got a motion is second to approve adding this item to the agenda. All those in favor of the motion? That's five zero, so, just so y'all know, if there's an item that has to be added to the agenda of the council, that's and second of all to add it to the agenda after we've posted the agenda, so. We don't do that very often. I have nothing under the mayor report, other than wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Four, land issues, zonings and annexation, A, 2016-413, public hearings, zoning requests, Z 16-016, rezoning from R 20 to R A D conditional for two single-family homes on 0.39 acres landlot, 632, 2731 Matthew Street. Matthew Younger, public hearing only, no vote. Is the applicant here? I think we can still go through with that, can't we? Mr. Jeffrey Tucker, who was here.
The council can go ahead and consider the item.
Okay. Is there anyone here? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, give us a background, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Rusty's come to the podium if you have specific questions, but this item is actually going to be, there's pieces of this item in items A, B, and C under land issues. The planning and zoning board heard this request, and on October 10th, and it was approved by a vote of six to zero, and the community development department has recommended approval to the rezoning from R 20 to R A D conditional for the development of two single-family units via density of 5.13 units per acre with several conditions, and I'll let Rusty address those conditions.
Rust, before you do that, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that is in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? Okay, if the record show there is none, Rust, if you go ahead and...
Good evening. This property is a vacant site, is located at 2731 Matthew Street. It is currently zoned R 20 in Cobb County, so there's an application for annexation along with rezoning. The applicant is proposing to build two single-family detached homes with one shared driveway and some detached garages. The request additional. This is the future development map. As you can see, the property has a future land use classification to low-density residential in Cobb County, but it butts the city where it is medium-density residential, which is 4.5 units per acre to six units per acre. Here's the proposed site plan. Got individual homes with detention facilities, underground detention, bio-retention areas in between the homes and the detached garages. They're proposing 25-foot front setback, five-foot side, and 25-foot rear. This is the location of the shared driveway. They'll be providing the city a five-foot right-of-way dedication with a five-foot sidewalk along Matthew Street. Those are the two bio-retention areas. Here are the proposed home elevations. Here's a street view from Matthews, what those would look like. Subject property, and then surrounding properties. Community development recommends approval of the rezoning from R 20 to R A D conditional at a density of 5.13 units per acre with following conditions, obviously, the standard conditions from section 1201, requiring a certain composition of the homes, underground utilities, traffic improvements, and burring of debris, streetlights, tree ordinance, and landscape plans. In addition to those standard conditions, we're requiring a set of special conditions, and those would be, the development shall maintain the following setbacks, a front setback of 25 feet, a side of five, and a rear of 25. The driveways should be a minimum of 22 feet in length. Next, the right-of-way along Matthew Street should be increased to 50 feet, therefore dedication of five feet is required. The developer should also provide a five-foot sidewalk with a two-foot grass buffer along Matthew Street. All structures will be built to the maximum height of 35 feet, and that's measured from the sidewalk along the front elevation, and the maximum allowable coverage for the property is limited to 45 percent, and that's any impervious surface area. Next, the all trees within limits of disturbance not located within tree protection area must be removed during land clearing and grading phase of development. Next, the property shall be zoned R A D conditional based upon the site plan provided, and it must be built in substantial compliance. And finally, the applicant's got to build the homes in substantial compliance to the elevations submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Rusty, on the site plans, did I say two detention bonds?
Each lot will have its own bio-retention area for its individual lot, and that's located in between the detached garage and the home.
Any other comments or questions of Rusty? Jeffrey, Jeffrey Tucker's here tonight, Scott Cochran's out. Does the applicant need to be here in order to, I know on annexations, we normally, it's not an issue, but the...
The applicant is not required to be here to advocate for their own application.
Pretty confident, I'd say.
He was notified back when he initially submitted and confirmed the notification, so...
Okay. Any questions of Rusty on this particular request? This is just, there was no vote taken on this. It's just the hearing on the requested rezoning. If there's no other, then I'm gonna shut down that one, then go to B, which is the annexation request, 100% of the owners requesting annexation ordinance, 2016-19, of all tracts of land lying and being in landlot 632, 17th District, Second Section, Cobb County, a total of 0.4 acre tract located at 2731 Matthew Street. Mr. Jones, anything else you want to add to that?
No additional. There's no additional background on this one. Again, this one's tied to the one that Rusty just went over the zoning stipulation for. I would just let you know that the annexation is consistent with some of the others that we've done. This is one of those unincorporated islands that have been left behind in the city of Smyrna.
All right. I know that Mrs. Nolowich, who is not here tonight, is in favor of both the annexation and the zoning, so I'll ask that, who wants to, Mr. Welch? This is for the annexation. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and let me just, is there anyone here who's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning the annexation? If the record show there is none, Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having no opposition, no questions from the council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the annexation request, 100% of owners requesting the annexation ordinance, 2016-19, of all tract or parcel of land lying and being in landlot 632, 17th District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia, a total of 0.4 acres tract located at 2731 Matthew Street.
Second.
And it become a part of Ward Three?
It is part of Ward Three, yes.
Got a motion is second. Any other discussion? Waiting on somebody. Yeah, we got through five zero. Item C, 2016-4 Z 16-016, rezoning from R 20 to R A D conditional for two single-family homes on 0.39 acres landlot 632, 2731 Matthew Street. Matthew Younger is the applicant. Mr. Welch, if you'll make that motion to...
I will, thanks, sir. I'd like to make a final motion to approve item 2016-473, zoning request, Z 16-016, rezoning from R 20 to R A D conditional for two single-family homes on 0.39 acres landlot 632 at 2731 Matthew Street by the applicant, Matthew Younger. This is in Ward Three.
Second.
With all the stipulations as stated earlier, okay?
With stipulations as stated by Rusty earlier.
Got a motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved five zero. 16-471, annexation request, 100% of the owners requesting annexation ordinance, 2016-20, of all tract or parcels of land lying and being in landlot 177, 18th District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia, for a total of 3.9 acre tract located at 1375 Veterans from Old Highway, Mableton. Mr. Fennel, Mr. Jones, if you please, give me the background.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This tract is currently in unincorporated Cobb County, who has the property zoned light industrial, and will be brought into the city of Smyrna upon a confirmation vote by the council as the same zoning classification. The zoning annexation application was submitted on October 21st, and letters were sent to Cobb County clerk by certified mail. We have since received a certified mail non-objection letter dated November 8th, 2016, from Cobb County, and the staff recommends approval.
It doesn't say this is a public hearing, Jeffrey. I don't know if it is or not, so. It doesn't say it's a public hearing, but on annexations, should I ask if there's any public?
No, this is not a public hearing on this because of the method.
Ron Fennel.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. The representative of the applicant is here. If he wants to say a word, I welcome him to do that, but this is an opportunity to welcome a new parcel into the city that has been, for a long time, neighboring us, and it's my pleasure to offer this opportunity to annex them into the city. Tom, did you want to say anything on behalf of the owners? Yes, no, maybe? He's glad to be here.
Smart man, just leave it alone.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of 2016-471, annexation request, 100% of the owners requesting annexation ordinance, 2016-20, of all tract and parcel of land lying and being in landlot 177, 18th District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia, for a total 3.9 acre tract located at 1375 Veterans Memorial Highway, Mableton, Georgia.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this annexation request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved five zero. Item E, which, by the way, I missed previously advertised as being tabled, but 2016-375, public hearings, zoning requests, Z 16-017, rezoning from neighborhood shopping to G C conditional for the construction of a 5,000-square-foot commercial building, 0.4 acre landlot, 446 Belmont Circle, Yorkshire Real Estate Corporation. Is there anybody here for that? Because we're gonna, it's gonna, the zoning will be held till December 5th, so. I'll ask that, anybody want to take care of that and table this for Ms. Wilkinson, since she's not here? Go ahead, Andrew, you can do that, or whoever.
Okay, if we don't have any additional information, then at this time, I would like to make a motion to table item 2016-375, which is zoning request, Z 16-017, rezoning from N S to G C conditional for the construction of a 5,000-square-foot commercial building, 0.4 acres, landlot 446, Belmont Circle, Yorkshire Real Estate Corporation.
Motion is second to table this till December 5th. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Five zero. Item F, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, zero, public hearings, zoning requests, rezoning from G C to R T D conditional for the construction of 68 townhomes, 7.25 acre tract, landlot 606, 4710, 4730, 4750, 4760, 4770, 4780, Camp Highland. Prime interest is the applicant. I will turn this over to Mr. Fennel, unless there's some, is there anyone here that came specifically for this tonight that would like to say anything? We're gonna table this till the 19th, but... Yes, there's two.
We have three who have indicated and want to speak to it, and we're gonna debate it and discuss it on the 19th, but I'm happy to hear the input, if that's appropriate.
Okay. Jeff, can we take testimony and not vote on this?
I think it's proper to take the testimony at the same time that there's the vote, so I would prefer, and I understand that it's an inconvenience, but if anyone who wants to speak on this, of course, you can always speak to the council in the interim about these matters, but if you'll come back on the 19th, that'd be, that'd be the proper procedure.
And even, I'll even put you on the end of the agenda at the, which will be shortly, and you can make a comment then under citizens input. Okay? All right, Mr. Fennel.
Thank you. This application, we've held two public meetings on this application that changed dramatically from one to the next in some people's eyes, but the, some details are not yet apparently ready for the final version to be heard, so that's why the request for tabling was made. And with that in mind, I'm always open to hearing additional feedback. I did hear from a couple of my neighbors over there, particularly on Argo Road, when it comes to some of the traffic-related issues, speed on Argo, some of the traffic and speed and safety issues on Camp Highland, and we did discuss it both of the town hall meetings relative to issues of the volume of traffic likely at the end of the construct, but we also discussed the fact that the details around the sploshed funding have a timing issue, and we'll, we discussed that, and we'll be happy to discuss that again on the 19th. In the meanwhile, I'll take any comments that anyone has specifically that they want to recommend. To that end, though, I am moving to table 2016-40, zoning request, Z 16-002, to December 19th, 2016.
Second.
Motion is second to table to December 19th. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved five zero, and again, if anyone is here, I'll let you sign up and under citizens input. Item G, public hearings, zoning request, Z 16-019, modification of zoning stipulation requiring a clubhouse and pool as an amenity feature, 17.77 acre landlot, 168, 178, Veterans from Old Parkway and Brookside Village Parkway, J and A Construction and Home Builders. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular zoning request has some history going back about nine years. This was originally rezoning Cobb County from R M 12 and P S C to R M 12 conditional, and the purpose was to demolish an existing apartment complex and develop 156 townhouses. In 2007, the developer received the land disturbance from Cobb County and did demolish the existing apartment complex, but then the market tanked, so it sat idle from 2007 to 2015. We were approached at the end of 2015 to annex the property into the city, so a year ago that occurred, or almost a year ago that occurred, and it was annexed to the city with the same zoning stipulations that were applied in Cobb County. The developer since been issued a land disturbance permit in Smyrna and has started work. What you have in front of you is a modification of those zoning stipulations, and it really is a formality. They would like to remove the requirement for a 2,400-square-foot clubhouse and replace that requirement with the installation of a cabana to serve the pool, and Rusty can give you specifics on that if you need them.
You did a really good job, so I don't know how much more I can add, other than to give you a little...
Y'all do a good job of...
I'll give you, I'll give you a little bit more context with regards to what it looks like and where the property is located. This property is located on Veterans Memorial Highway, just west of Oakdale Road. Highlighted right there for you, you see it, it joins on the northeast corner of the property to the city of Smyrna. As Mike said, it was annexed back in December of last year. Here's the background, we've already gone over that, and here's the stipulation number 10 and how it reads specifically. The proposed residential development shall contain an active amenity area containing both a swimming pool and a community clubhouse. The clubhouse, which includes a kitchen, workout facility, and meeting areas, shall be built according to the architectural style and composition as aforementioned, and shall be a minimum 2,400 square feet. So, the request is to remove the clubhouse requirement and replace it with a cool, pool cabana that'll provide a covered meeting area along with storage area for pool equipment and restrooms for changing. Here's the proposed site plan with the pool cabana, and then some architectural renderings of that cabana. Community development recommends approval of modifying that stipulation. Below is the wording changes to that stipulation that remove the requirements for the 2,400 square-foot clubhouse and replace it with the cabana, and then ties it to the plan that was submitted by the applicant. With that, I'll answer any questions.
So, nothing's been built down there yet?
No, they're just putting infrastructure in right now. The applicant could probably give you a timeframe as to when they're ready to start building structures out there.
Public hearing, is there anyone here who wants to make any public comment either for or against this zoning stipulation? Anyone? If the record show there is none, Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you pointing out the fact that the construction has not yet technically begun on the structures, and so all residents who actually move in here will have clear knowledge and revelation of this change and what amenities are available to them at the time they move in. With all of that and the fact that the annexation occurred last December, they have done a lot of site work, and they're ready to start the physical construction, I'm told, within the next three or four months. So, with that, I move approval of zoning request, Z 16-019, modification of zoning stipulation requiring a clubhouse and pool as an amenity feature, 17.7 acres, landlots 168 and 178, Veterans Memorial Parkway and Brookside Village Parkway for J and A Construction and Home Builders.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this zoning stipulation change. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved five zero. Item five is previous licenses, A, 2016 A public hearing, previous license request, 2016-442, beer, wine, liquor pouring, 4479 South Cobb Drive, Chris's Caribbean Bristo, Inc., doing business, Chris Caribbean Bristo, and with Christopher Orlando Guy Campbell as the agent. See, I guess you're the guy.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers.
All right, I'll buy you a minute. The background, please, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Campbell was given a copy of the alcohol beverage ordinance and attended a mandatory alcohol awareness workshop, and a copy of that certificate is enclosed, and he has one in his hand. A background investigation that was performed by the Smyrna Police Department has failed to reveal any information that would preclude the issuance of the license and is recommended for approval.
Christopher Orlando Guy Campbell, you, right?
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this previous license request? Mr. Doug Stoner, senior district?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Campbell, welcome to your new restaurant in Smyrna. I understand it's down there next to Jared Crickets, is that correct?
Yes, I bought the building.
Okay, so you have the building. Okay, so you have the building. Yeah. And we're glad, I understand it's a Caribbean-themed restaurant, bistro?
Yes.
Well, that's great. Now, just to make sure, as was mentioned before, obviously you attended our mandatory training classes in the sense when it comes to dealing with alcohol in the city. And obviously, you're the agent, and your employees have a full understanding of what that means here in the city in the sense that we do unannounced compliance checks by the Smyrna Police, and that the point is made that this is a privilege, not a right, to be able to serve alcohol in the city limits of Smyrna.
Yes.
So you clearly understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Glad to hear that. We look forward to having you as a new business here in the city limits of Smyrna, and hopefully some of us will get a chance to stop by and try out your Caribbean bistro.
Love to have you guys.
And everything.
How soon?
You always say, how soon do you look, in a sense of?
About the first week of January.
Okay. Well, something to look forward to after Christmas.
Yes.
Been a long time. Have you been remodeling, building?
Yes, extending way over budget.
Does that mean the prices are going to be higher?
I'm going to try my best to keep them down.
I'll tell you about Smyrna, people love to eat.
Yes.
And drink, and I mean, I don't drink to excess, but just, you're in a good location.
I moved here from California sixteen years ago, and I've just seen the area just.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I got here in '48. That's when I woke up, I was here.
Well, this time, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for five-A in the sense of 2016-442 for approval of the previous license request 2016-442 beer wine and liquor pouring at 4479 South Cobb Drive, Chris Caribbean Bistro Incorporated, doing business as Chris Caribbean Bistro with Christopher Orlando Guy Campbell as the agent.
Motion is second to approve this previous license for beer, wine, and liquor. Any other discussion? Piece of cake, you're in five-zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Item six is formal business. A is 2016-477 approval to amend the concession and franchise agreement between the City of Smyrna and Gunner Fly Now LLC for the Fox Creek Golf Club property and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, this agreement actually expired on May 31st of this year, and as a result of the private financial investment that was being made to Fox Creek to improve the golf course, the City of Smyrna was approached and following negotiations is presenting to you a proposed franchise agreement that, that will extend the one that just expired until May 31st of 2051, or a period of 35 years. The compensation that will come from this franchise agreement will be $20,000 a year to be paid to the city in two equal installments of $10,000 at the beginning and at the middle of each year. In addition to that, the city will receive basically a royalty on the number of rounds that are played on the premises, and we receive 25 cents per round for all rounds exceeding 30,000 per year.
Not sure who's, this is Ms. Wick, so I'm not sure who's going to take care of this. I'll just, just a little background on this. The city acquired this property, gosh, several years ago, 1980. I'm not sure when it was. Eighty-one?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. Federal government gave us 77 acres and gave Cobb County 77 acres, and had to be used for public use, recreational, and we entered into agreement back then. The group of folks wanted to build a golf course, so property belongs to City of Smyrna. The golf course was built by the private sector, and we, we, it's their course, they run it, they maintain it, and then in return, it's a public course for our citizens to use, and it turned out to be pretty good. But these folks, Gunner Fly Now, they put a ton of money into that thing. They purchased it about a year ago, I guess, and we're delighted that they're there. I'll turn this over to Ron Fennel, who, if you want to make the motion.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since it does have fiscal impact on the city and the fact that we have a new, an old-new partner and an asset in our inventory, I move approval to amend the concession and franchise agreement between the City of Smyrna and Gunner Fly Now LLC for the Fox Creek Golf Club property and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Got a motion second. Is there anyone here from Gunner Fly, by any chance? Okay. Not necessary. Got a motion second to amend this concession and franchise agreement. Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved five-zero. Thank you very much. 2016-483 adopt and authorizing resolution approving intergovernmental economic development agreements with the downtown Smyrna Development Authority as well as a bond placement agreement with the placement agent in downtown Smyrna Development Authority, all of which are related to the refunding of bonds issued in 2014 related to the Smyrna Grove project. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is an action that will ratify action that was taken by the downtown Smyrna Development Authority last week. As a positive to the change in the recent bond market, the downtown development authority was able to refinance bonds that were actually issued in 2014, and these bonds are instant to the Smyrna Grove project. The resulting savings is about $357,000 over a period of 10 years. These are not new bonds, we're not adding to it, we're simply taking the bonds that exist and refinancing them at a lower rate. And Mr. Tom Owens is present, he's with Raymond James that helped facilitate this deal.
I'll ask that Mr. Ron Fennel, who chairs the Finance Administration Committee, to address that, please.
We appreciate the talent that we have as part of our team with our city attorney and with our bond counsel, and we appreciate Mr. Owens and the team helping us to realize a savings of approximately $36,000 a year for our tax of 30,000 plus per year on refinancing while the rates are low, and we believe that project in its overall scheme has proven to be a net benefit to the City of Smyrna, and so these bond refinancing opportunities, while we have the moment in time with the cost savings are well warranted, and I therefore move approval of 2016-483 adopting and authorizing resolution approving intergovernmental economic development agreements with the Smyrna, downtown Smyrna Development Authority as well as a bond placement agreement with the placement agent and the downtown Smyrna Development Authority, all of which are related to refund, funding of bonds issued in 2014 related to the Smyrna Grove project. Second.
A motion second to adopt and approve this intergovernmental economic development resolution. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. PET 2016-02 approval of a fee waiver request of all applicable building permit fees and other associated fees in the amount of $15,950 for the Cobb Douglas Public Health Department for the renovation of the building at, sorry, hold on one second, 3,001 South Cobb Drive. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, Cobb County government purchased this property for the future home of the Smyrna Public Health Center, and so funding is coming from different sources, and this is the dollar amount that, with the waiver of fees, that will be a contributing amount from the City of Smyrna. I would just add, in addition to this dollar amount through the community development block grants, that will also be providing about $25,000 for the purchase of exam tables that will be part of the WIC program that will be going into this facility.
I'll ask that Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Take care of this item, too.
This is a great asset in our community, serving those who need it most, and we're appreciative of this community development block grant as well as the opportunity here to waive some of the fees for this public entity to continue to serve our citizens. So I move approval of a fee waiver request for all applicable building permit fees and other associated fees in the amount of $15,950 for Cobb Douglas Public Health Department for the renovation of the building at 3,001 South Cobb Drive.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved five-zero. Item D, which is the item that we added to the agenda. Designate public parking along Belmont Boulevard is limited to three hour consecutive hours and authorized signs to be installed to this effect, and I guess they go into effect tomorrow. Nothing to do that except to vote on it.
Hearing no comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6D 2016-488 designate public parking along Belmont Boulevard is limited to three consecutive hours and authorized signs to be installed to this effect.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please. It's approved five-zero. Item seven is. Mr. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, sir. There are four items on tonight's consent agenda. Item A is approval of mayor and council meeting minutes for November 7th, 2016. Item B is approval of the pre-council meeting minutes for November 7th, 2016. Item C is approval of the mayor and council committee of the whole meeting minutes for November 3rd, 2016. And item number D is approval to allow porch light Latin kitchen to serve outside alcohol, right outside of their establishment for their first year anniversary celebration on November 24th or November, December 4th. They haven't chosen which date yet, and the time will be limited from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
You hear motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please. It's approved five-zero. Committee reports.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report, except it's the holiday season. Please drive safely.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and actually, I have no report and concur with my colleague's statements about the holidays.
Okay. Mr. Corky Welch.
No formal report, Your Honor. I do wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and wish they all spend some time with your family and enjoy it.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Okay. This first thing is for Ward Five residents. I'm going to play the part of Susan Wilkinson now. On December the 8th, Ward Five will have a South Cobb Corridor Study meeting from 6:30 to 8:30 at, here at City Hall. And then, we'd like to remind you that we have, we have our favorite, one of our favorite things coming up very soon, this coming home for the holidays celebration, which will be held on Tuesday, November 29th on the Village Green from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM for coming home for the holidays. You can watch Santa light the great Christmas tree in the middle of the Village Green at 7:00 PM and transform the downtown Smyrna with brilliant lights. Enjoy holiday festivities, musical performances by local church and school choral groups, activities for the kids, for the adults, too, parade, and a visit with Santa at the Smyrna Community Center. So please join us if, from, on Tuesday, November 29th on the Village Green here from 5:00 to 8:00. And as far as Ward Two, I don't have, I mean, yeah, Ward Two, I don't have a report, but I would like to wish every one of you a very happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving. This traffic, I know lately on Spring Road has just been a nightmare for all of you, but I am, they have, I have received promises that very soon it's coming to an end, so enjoy your holiday.
Mr. Derek Norton. Excuse me, Mr. Derek Norton.
I'm happy to report that the majority of the paving is done on Spring Road. I know it was a tough weekend, particularly Saturday. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. There is light at the end of the tunnel. That project will be completed here shortly. I wanted to report on, report to, report to you on our fire department, brag on them a little bit. They've been going above and beyond, and I wanted you to know that we were contacted by the Georgia Municipal Aid Association for some, asking for assistance up in Towns County and Hiawassee from municipalities around the state, and they, they called us as one of them. It was Smyrna and four other jurisdictions to begin, to go help fight the fires in North Georgia. And so we sent three firefighters and an engine up there last week, and then we did rotations, so I think in all, 15 firefighters went up and, and helped, and the last of which came home today safely. I know Chief Akry went up to Hiawassee on Friday, and they were very thankful that we were able to help, so that, that was a pretty awesome thing that they did. And then lastly, I just want to wish you and your family a happy Thanksgiving, safe travels, and concludes my report. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mike Jones. Jeffrey Tucker, who's filling in tonight for Scott Cochran.
No report tonight, Your Honor. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Mr. Terry Graham.
I don't have a report either, but I would like to do something that most people, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but tonight is my, today is my dad's 80th birthday, and I'd like to wish him a happy birthday.
Oh, good. Is he here?
No, but he'll be watching. He's in Texas. He'll be watching.
Yep. Heather B., that name, you got anything? We do not have a show cause hearing. Got one person signed up for Citizens Input, and then anyone else that wanted to speak as it related to anything else on the agenda that we tabled. Stuart Barron of 2621 Vining Slope Southeast, 30339 Burger Dog Park is your, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm not much of a speaker. It's my friend Mike. We're here on, kind of on behalf of Burger Dog Park, which is 680 Glendale Place, which is right down the street. And we were just, we, we're coming here because we're looking for maybe improvements to it. There's fences where dogs can get from the little dog park to the big dog park, and, and the latches are broken, and I know it's all a dust bowl because it hasn't rained in about two months.
Sixty-seven days.
Has it been? Over two months it hasn't rained, but that's not, that's not our fault here. Also, before, let's see, a few weeks ago, you could count anywhere between 29 and 35 cars there around 6 o'clock at night when people get off work. Now, it's completely dark at 6 o'clock, we all know that. A light would be nice, at least just for a couple of hours. I know there's a dog park down the street that has something similar, but you know, they also have smoking sections, too, which is beyond me. I wasn't sure about that, but, and benches, maybe a few more benches, it's just, just more details, attention to dog park. A lot of people use it. In fact, just the past week, I got 117 signatures for people that are using the park.
You want to, if you want to turn those in, our city clerk will.
All prints? I was going to get some on the back of them, too, I just, but I've been going there for three years, about five days a week, so, and we really enjoy the park. It's really, it's very popular. A lot of people use it. I didn't know the process of getting it on the agenda.
Well, and here's the deal, during Citizens Input, we don't, we don't talk and.
Yeah, 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 that's fine.
We just happen to have, today, our new Parks Recreation Director started today. A week ago Monday, our new Parks Superintendent started, so your timing couldn't be any better. If you'll see this guy right here to my right, this right here, right after the meeting, he'll take all the, he's our city administrator, and he'll pass that on.
And, and you just saved $30,000 on refinancing your bonds, so.
Yeah, but we, but we just waived 15,000 for the. No, our, our two dog parks have gotten tremendous support from our citizens, and I take my dog down there often, twice.
Would there be a possibility to get additional parks in other parts of the city? Because I travel, I, I'm on Oakdale and Veterans Memorial, and.
I'm happy to speak to that whenever we, we'll talk afterwards, but yep, we're, we're underparked, and we have opportunities, and we thank you for noticing and helping.
Thanks for the. Thanks for the time.
Yeah, and it's not an election year. If you'd have come last year, you probably could have got two. But we can look at some other areas, those are fairly low maintenance and, but they get a lot of use. So thanks for letting us know, I'm always glad to hear from folks. Your time's up, you have to know. I'm just kidding. Anyone else that was, I know we had some folks here for a hearing, if you want to get up and tell us who you are and where you live, I'd be glad to sort of wave, wave, yeah, come on up. Give you an opportunity to speak, just tell us who you are, where you live and any comment that you'd like to make and we'll just-
My name is Steve Calvano, I'm, I work in the, I live in the Weatherbrook sub-development. Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity just to speak briefly. Both of my comments concerning 2016-40 zoning request, Z-16002. As we all know, this, this request has been postponed and tabled quite a few times over the last couple of years. Two requests would be, one that, in this table tonight and when it's rescheduled, any kind of tabling again or rescheduling, if we could get an early posting, that would, we'd really appreciate it so we can get the board members out here. The second is just a statement that I hacked, I serve as the secretary on the board for the HOA at Weatherbrook and I'm accompanied by the president of our HOA, Mr. Panitbir. And just a statement that, as, as we voiced in the town hall meeting with, with Councilman Fennel and a number of emails over the last couple of years, Weatherbrook's board does, does not object or, or in any way have an opposition to the development of that property and, and the development that's under consideration per se. But we do really urge you to consider whatever funds are available for improvements to Camp Highland. It's a terribly unsafe road today. Adding the traffic onto that road will make it even more unsafe and a number of improvements have been suggested over the last couple of years and we do appreciate your consideration of those.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that, that's when we're going to conclude that, that portion? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm Sheldon Snipe, I'm the HOA president for the other neighborhood across the street, not Weatherbrook but Woodland Brook. And I guess I'm more of a messenger. The, the input that I've heard, it, it's mainly surrounding traffic on Camp Highland Road and then over to Argo Road, particularly in the morning rush hour and so forth. And one particular concern was, is kind of interesting. Folks feel that if traffic backs up sufficiently, folks may start using Woodland Brook, the main road that runs right through the neighborhood and it's a long, it's easy to pick up a lot of speed coming through there. And we don't know if that will happen, but it would not be a good development if, if it does. And we're wondering whether there was some type of study done, you know, we're looking at 68 units. So I'm not sure what all has been done, but if there's something that can be done to try to, and nobody's got a crystal ball, but we're counting on you guys to try to have the ball and figure out what, if traffic's going to be an issue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then now I'll close that portion of citizens input down and just to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That hearing is December the 19th. If by some chance it's tabled or requests to be tabled, but we're going to hear it the 19th of December, so, at 7:00. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving, be safe and I declare this meeting adjourned, if there's no other business, at 7:53.